Also about being cool and you know what it's cool to, you know like they go back and forth at that age between wanting to act like a little kid and wanting to act like a teenager and I think it's nice to give them a place where they can still be the little kid.
I think that really is articulated very well kind of what's been set.
So I would say earlier that I have the perspective of two different age groups and I've looked, we've basically just been talking about how this affects the sixth graders. But I see this environment as great for the younger kids and as my second grader gets to have sixth grade mentors in this school setting where they actually have interaction with them, I think that's fabulous. And to take the sixth graders away from the school setting, I think negatively impacts the younger kids. I think it's only been talked about how it impacts the sixth graders, but I think that how does it impact K through four, K through five?
Interesting.
So a question, I don't know if you can answer, but we, so we, to go back to talking about maybe we're very bright children who seem to be very academically successful throughout all their years. What do you do if you have a sixth grader, and to ask about curriculum, what do you do if you have a sixth grader who is capable and wanting to do seventh and eighth grade math? Are we individualizing the education for them now?
Oh, we got a good question.
Do you have a seventh and eighth grade?
Yeah, really good question. Kevin? Uh, no, um, so you know, we, the whole, the whole model is gonna talk a little bit later on, I think about, um, so SAU nine is doing, um, everyday math program and we're following that. Which has a small enrichment component, um, and what I will say about kids who want to do seventh, eighth grade math. Instead, what I would say is what I have to offer them is extensions from, of the math that we're already doing. Um, so for example, we have, um, problem of the week. Um, so I've searched through the problem of the week libraries and they're tough, um, problems at, at different levels. I pull them out at the level that's related to the curricular topic that we're doing right now, which is probability and statistics in sixth grade. Um, so rather than saying here's the seventh grade, here's a seventh grade book of, you know, probability and statistics, go ahead and shoot for it. I'm looking at, um, what those kids are needing, um, and supplementing, um, beyond the everyday math program with extensions of the curricular topic. Um, and it's sometimes it's something as fun as, um, the K one was, um, counting birthdays in the school. So, um, one of the sixth graders has in their folder that data to make a dot plot, which is what we're currently working on and to go back and present that to the K one. So there, so the extensions and the enrichment is not unnecessarily, um, moving them up, you know, but we're extending, um, the curricular topic that they have.
We do have cases, we could point to cases where we've had kids that in the sixth grade did the seventh grade curriculum straight through, but it, it grows them so much more when they're taking the sixth grade curriculum and applying it and going deeper with it and leading, you know, doing something with it.
And the other piece is like for the reading and writing, it's all done in the workshop model, so the kids read at their instructional level, no matter what that is, whether it's low, high, mid, just right. They, and writing is the same way. We, you know, some kids will write six pages, some kids will write six sentences within the same classroom.
We have an example of a national writing competition winner in the sixth grade, right?
A couple of years, yeah.
And so, you know, I think it's, it's clear that they're invited to take their writing as far as they, to Washington D.C.
So we needn't be concerned that Bartlett, if they put their sixth graders with seventh and eighth and they're looping, but academically, that should not be a concern?
Their classes would be separate, correct?
Classes, separate advisory.
I think their classes would still be, um, would still be separate, so, um, I, I think, um, our curriculum then is still the sixth grade curriculum. You know, and we have, we have here, um, the opportunity for, um, kind of some more project-based, um, learning stuff that we're working on. Um, and that even just the numbers allow us to do a little bit better. Does that answer?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Well, I think this is a really good start for us to start this conversation. Um, it's gonna be an ongoing conversation. I think really to get by in from the community, get by in from the board, get communication flowing, so it's working well. I think for me, this was a really good start. And we'll have to frame where we're going from here. Thank you all for coming to the Listening Post. Um, I think we're gonna try to roll into our regular meeting now and get that going. Um, you're all very welcome to stay for that, obviously. If you do want to get up and exit, you're certainly welcome to let your side be in the service.
What was the, what was the question?
I didn't know, they, they, how their committee's looking into the middle school, however, if they did any surveying of kids by any chance.
From survey, your parents don't have, that parent, they certainly haven't asked any, you know.
I do like that, yeah, maybe not. On our agenda, we're setting the test, everybody left? First up on our agenda is approve the minutes from August fifteenth.
Does she need names? Yeah, it, just, if we can make an introduction, but if you do, the recording secretary, Jim King, Jim Sadler, he'll do a terrific job, but maybe the board, you can introduce yourselves so you can grab who you are.
I'm Jim, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jessica.
Jen, hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
And Gail is the.
Sorry?
So, so moved.
I thought she was here all the time.
Oh, interesting. Uh, any changes, discussions, comments?
You know, I wasn't here, but I think there was a meeting.
Yes, uh, five E, is that supposed to be Kevin?
Keith, I think he called that a lot. He played for the Stones.
Well, it's funny, when I saw this and I thought, was that me? Am I supposed to be at this meeting?
No, it's.
So we can change that for the record.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other changes? Call all those in favor.
I'll have one change.
If you're here, you changed the minutes for us, right? In fact, I probably read them really closely.
That's good, Dan, it was a time to keep watching who's really here.
Brings us to citizen comments. Does anyone have anything at this time?
Citizen comments?
That's what I'm staring at, we're waiting.
Maybe you've been to our meetings before, but.
I haven't.
You haven't. Um, we have citizen comments at the beginning and at the end. We do try to keep a pretty open dialogue going. If you do have questions or going through something you don't understand, feel free to put your hand up and ask, or if you have a comment towards something, always welcome to hear it.
Okay, thank you.
And Melissa, right?
Yes.
Melissa, okay, right.
Presentation to school FYI items.
Now, just, uh, I thought a real strong opening to the school year for everybody, um, and in getting around to the different schools and the administration. I passed out the goals for the SAU nine, you know, Gail will be speaking throughout the year about those. Um, one thing for the board members, we did have an SAU nine board meeting recently. Sent out an email, if you didn't get a copy of the email with a survey, uh, please respond to the survey. Yeah, good. Uh, just presentations will line up about four this year for you folks, so if there's anything specific that you'd like to find out more information about, please, uh, provide feedback for us. So that's it for that part of the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Um, old business, preschool committee.
Studies shows, we are hoping to come to you guys next month, um, with something, uh, or we will tell you why we don't.
Don't think there's any new news on secure access to the Whitney Center?
No.
Or for Whitney facility usage, I don't think there's anything new there, is there?
There will be, um, by next month. They presented a draft, Jess and Sarah worked on a draft of a new fee schedule. And there were some adjustments made at our last meeting, so that should be ready to bring, just to share with you when it gets finalized.
Review of salary schedule for hiring. Um, we did have a policy committee meeting right before the Listening Post. Um, and Kevin did present us with a. Review of our salary schedule comparing it to other schools, so much of our district. Daniel, you already got one there. And we kind of opted with, we weren't sure whether we should, you know, do we want to present it as a first?
Can we just do general, general?
Yeah, just do a general piece.
So at any rate, um, I guess review it for a few moments here.
For what we found is whenever, we always want to hire the best people for our school because we love our school and think it's awesome. And so the last few times we've had to like break policy in order to get an appropriate, um, compensation package. And so we found after a couple of times you break policy, it's like maybe the policy isn't that good and it hasn't been updated in a while, so we're looking to update it.
So one of, one of the things that we tried to do to make logical sense was when the strategic plan was down, collected a lot of information. And what we found out was that your salary schedule is really low and, uh, on both ends. And it's not that you have a lot of employees, but you're going to have to correct that at some point for hiring. Otherwise, you're going to have to make substantial changes all at one time. So the policy personnel committee, the policy committee is taking a look at really structurally, where do, where do you want to be, where do you want to begin and where do you want to end? So that as people come in, you aren't just arbitrarily grabbing numbers to put people in place here, so.
And that's another aspect where we, we want our policies to be, we have policies so that we're fair to everyone, that we treat them, um, all the same. And there's a chance for like unfairness to kind of creep in, um, if you, if you don't have good policies. So that's why it's pressing that we want to address this.
So I think our budget at this point is to, for the October meeting, probably to take a look at a first draft of, of policy change and, um, in the salary schedule.
So these are all the comps behind it?
Yeah, and what those are just is that there's, the first one is a fifty mile radius of, of here, that's your direct competition. And then the other comp is, comp two is, you can't for schools that are similar in size and structure. So they're too comparative with similar demographics.
And so this is coming from the personnel committee?
Right, correct.
This is the, from the personnel committee?
Yeah, Kevin put it together for us and we reviewed it. We liked the way it looks. Um, the, um, for instance, when we looked at the, the fifty mile radius, we were the second lowest starting salary point.
And the lowest incremental upgrade. We were the second lowest starting and the lowest incremental upgrade.
Was there a lot of discussion about how this affects our budget? Are we saving that for October?
Um, we, if we did what was put together here for the numbers, it would be a twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollar increase to the budget for, for next year.
That's on the last page, the last page is.
Oh, I got you. So this would be the twenty, so this would be, this is the current and then this would be the adopted for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the increase?
Or if we had the policy, right.
For developing the budget for next.
Next year, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing was missing from those numbers, Kevin, was the.
Twenty-six hundred.
I didn't, wasn't listening when you were talking about the twenty-six hundred dollars.
Right. That's what people do.
If you were to keep him, so there are people that would be on the salary schedule and then you have folks who have been here a number of years who are off of the salary schedule. You already have in your, your, uh, policy, a, a system where folks can be eligible for up to twenty-one hundred if they're proficient, not the five hundred dollars. So that doesn't take into consideration probably, those folks.
Okay.
But that'll come with a recommendation from the policy personnel committee.
Any questions?
Thank you for doing this. We have whatever we're doing now. Thank you for doing, thank you for doing, thank you.
Brings us to instructional issues, any at this time? Moving on to consider personnel actions. Consider election of Jenny Myers as fifty percent specialized teacher and twenty percent enrichment teacher.
Two?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
I know she's really highly recommended from, was it John Fuller, wherever she was before.
Two different schools.
Oh, that didn't, yeah, really bummed to lose her, but we're happy to have.
Consider election of Matthew Libeno, Gail Yalinesian, and Joan Heisler as mentors.
Who is, who is Matthew?
He's the P.E. teacher, um, from the Pine Tree School, who is also the head of the U.A. team. So he is serving as Stephen Cooney's mentor this year.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions on that. Can we, I, you have a motion or?
Oh, sorry.
Motion, second. Are you gonna second? I had some questions on that, too. Were you done, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, no.
So, SAU nine, why, everything, the new teacher get a mentor?
Well, when you say.
Joe, did you get a new mentor last year?
The year before that?
Yeah. I don't know, when you, you came back to a new position, you were here already and then you kind of came on as a different position.
That's a good question.
So my point is, I don't want to sound like a jerk here, but, um, and I know it's minimal money. Steve Cooney, he's been here before, he's a twenty percent position and this is no offense to Steve Cooney, great guy, I like him, but we pay a thousand dollars for a mentor for somebody who's a twenty percent position, who's already been here and done that before? I'm just questioning it, I'm not.
So the, the SAU and Conway districts have this year begun a formal induction mentorship program, which all of the, um, faculty in Conway are going through. Matt, since he's working for Conway and also mentoring other Conway staff, he sort of had to get the same amount for mentoring Stephen, just because that's the way their, their contract works there.
In Conway?
In Conway. Um, and then I think Katie and Kevin are going to be recommending that we do that as well, because it's not just an in, we've always done a five hundred dollar mentorship and it's been a little less formal. Uh, the people make the, their appointments and they go about connecting whenever they need to and they do a brief report at the end. This is a very formal process. Is it monthly? I'm not sure all the details, but I think they're meeting monthly with the other mentors and it's a very professional induction, um, aimed at keeping, you know, one of the strategic planning goals was to keep staff.
Is that for all three or just?
And I'm not, I'm not trying to.
No, so, so, um, that would only be for Matt Libeno, for Stephen this year. And Gail Yalinesian and Joan would be getting the five hundred dollar stipend because they wouldn't be going through the formal Conway induction program in the same way as Stephen.
There's a fourteen hour training program that Matt went through. Next year, we would expect other folks to put it in their budget to go through. There's a much more formalized mentoring program.
Uh, this has nothing to do with any of these individuals, but there is, these disparities are concerning in that you have one person getting a thousand dollars for mentoring one person, one person getting five hundred for mentoring one person, and one person getting five hundred for mentoring two people.
Well, I think as Keith said, both Carrie Skridner has been here before. It's been a number of years since she's, um, been on our faculty. So it's a, in terms of bringing her up to speed for things like utilizing the work, um, workshop model in art, that was something that we didn't do years ago. There's new curriculum in places, a lot of new things that we're doing here in terms of integration. So, um, that's why it's less, because Carrie won't require as much mentorship as Stephen, who only had one year. If you look at their, um, experience levels, it's very different. And then we're not requiring Joan as the mentor to go through the induction. So the, the number of hours that she's giving will be less than the number of hours that Matt Libeno will be required to work with the staff.
So were there minimums put in place? I mean, what, what framework were these people, were these staff members given to make, to be mentors, aside from the fourteen hour thing for Libeno? You know, I'm just, I'm always concerned with fairness, so I have three employees who are getting three different salaries for one that looks like they're doing capital work, so if you can just.
Right, for Gail and for Joan, they work with their mentee whenever it's convenient for them. When they get together and, and whenever they have a question, they go to Joan. So Carrie and, um, questions from Jenny about the enrichment program will go to Joan. And because Joan's in our bus, in our building and has done the specialized enrichment position before, she's gonna be the kind of go-to person for the questions. As opposed to a formal mentorship program. And the same with Gail. She has mentored, um, our last two special educators. And it will be on her schedule in the morning when she's just passing through. It'll be much less intensive. And that's why there's a pay differential.
Is she, I thought she was preschool?
She's preschool special educator.
Got it, okay, thank you.
But she, she's gonna be focusing mainly on how to use Nessus, the computerized system that they all use, and how to run a meeting and how to do the administrative role of, of the special education.
Next year, it'll be consistent across the board.
Will there be a policy? Or like, how does this work?
This is kind of the second year of, of the broader mentor program and.
Yeah, and really it changed. I mean, Bartlett, next year probably Scott's here, but you'll see that as well. Joe didn't put it into his budget last year, so Bartlett folks didn't go through the, the formalized program that we put together this, this summer.
Nor did we.
Yeah.
But it seemed to make sense to have Stephen participate in that.
I thought it was twenty-five hundred in our mentor budget, it was only five hundred?
It's five hundred per individual. I think we only had five hundred in that line this year, so I'm gonna have to find money to move into it.
And I'm gonna abstain from the vote on this. And my only point on, on this was kind of, I'm gonna compare it to like Jerry and I with the Bartlett contract that, you know, for years, everybody just signed this thing and signed this thing and signed this thing. And I don't know, I, I have a problem with it. I know it's minimal money and I know that the people who are doing these mentor roles are probably great, uh, employees and that's great. So reward for something else is kind of my opinion on it.
Wait, can you clarify that? Because I was with you until that last part's over.
If they're great employees and you want to reward them, find another way to give them a bonus, but don't, I don't, you know, be a mentor because you want to, not for the five hundred dollars.
Oh, well, in the end.
On some extent. I know, I understand you just said some new stuff go through SAU nine, but I don't have my head wrapped around all that new stuff and just in general, I've had, I've always had an issue with the mentoring.
And I think from my expectation, it is above and beyond the school day, that they're meeting after school or before school or calling on each other on the phone in the evening. And so you're right, our faculty does it anyway. But it is just a way to recognize them for the extra time and, and effort it takes to, to be there when someone on your staff needs you to fill in the gaps. They're better from the classroom than me. I mean, I can do some of it, but someone who's in the trenches, they're not evaluating this person. So this person can come and say, I really am having a hard time with the workshop model here, can you help me out? Whereas they wouldn't say that to me necessarily because I'm gonna be evaluating them.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of value to a person being able to go to someone other than just the administrator for that kind of help. A lot of value to it.
And I, I would agree with you. I think, I mean, I could mentor in a formal program, that part of it is professional, but I'm more concerned about just the equity between who's getting what and what they're doing. So for that reason, probably it's being as well. Unless you can.
I just ask a question of how they're even chosen? Like, I don't know how the process works.
There's an application in the bigger schools, um, that they have to actually fill out. I'm not sure, it's such a small pool here. I mean, that's part of the reason why you have Matt Libeno, there are only so many P.E. teachers available. And he's willing to go through the training. You can't be a mentor in Conway unless you go through this training commitment. Monthly meetings, logging, giving reports, making scheduled appointments on given days. I mean, but part, part of what used to happen is your buddy could be your mentor and those are built in. Anybody who works in this building has five built-in mentors for different things. What this does is it formalizes it a little bit more and they aren't your buddy necessarily, they're a mentor. And it's really about those expectations in the classroom and providing good feedback for these folks. So it has been a transitional piece, but they do have to apply and they do have to attend and they do have to be experts in those fields.
Is the difference solely because of that fourteen hour training that Libeno has and because he's gone through the formal program and the other two are not formal?
What you said, and the training, you went through the training.
That's what I'm saying.
The training and the accountability on the other end. They sign up, they have to do certain.
So there's no formal requirements of the mentors that are in-house as opposed to him?
Less formal.
Others want to report their hours to me at the end of the year and I check in with them.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Proceeding?
If you would like, we can have Katie does a real nice little synopsis overview of the transitional mentoring program as it moves forward, do you think?
I think I've seen that and I'm on board with that. I think that there should be formal guidelines and accountability paying. I just think it should be equal across the board.
Business affairs, budget status report. Any questions there? Comments? Yeah, administrative reports?
But really, um, I mean, you started the conversation tonight, but as Gail starts to think about moving forward, the more direction we have from you folks as far as configurations. And I know that's, I know it's only September, but in building the budget and you folks that are on the budget committee, as it goes again, and Dan. So more input that Gail can have, the better off we'll be.
I think one thing we should kind of talk as a board right away is that we, are we gonna reject Gail if she comes back with us cutting a teacher?
Yeah, we already said last year. We did that last year. We made that clear that we are not exercising that option for her to do that again, unless we direct her to. Can we get him to direct her?
That's what I was asking, so we can reach.
It's a twenty hours back to you.
One thing I wouldn't mind necessarily kind of directing towards is, I mean, I, I think that we're all comfortable, correct me if I'm wrong, with the, the needs budget. Like, we aren't looking to cut the budget by any certain amount, it's, it's a need budget. But I guess one thing I would like to, to throw out there is, you know, to the, to Gail and the staff is, don't be afraid to think outside the box.
Oh, we are, Jerry, we are.
Don't be afraid, don't be afraid to ask for something big or small.
Field trips, whatever, whatever, something with.
Field trips, books, seat perch equipment, I mean, whatever it is, I, I think that, don't be afraid to come to us and ask. We might tell you no, but I think, don't be afraid to think big, think small, think interesting, um, things and come to us and say, hey, here's an idea, what do you think? And allow us to make the decision of, you know, that's gonna break the budget or, or no, that's not good, but, um, I think it would be, you just kind of need to throw that out there and say, hey, why don't you guys think big and, or small?
Yeah, I like that.
Think about where you want to go or something and present it to us and, and see what we think about it.
So can I just ask, like, in some of the, in the meeting prior to this meeting, we've talked about the, what was, what was your term? And Angus Badger brought it up, like the super awesome sixth grade year.
Super awesome sixth grade.
Oh, I got it, right, no, it's super awesome sixth grade. Super spectacular sixth grade year. What did, what do we think about that? Or what do people think about that?
Do you feel you need to know that information, how the board feels on whether?
Well, that could just affect the budget, I think.
Yeah, that's what, meaning for budget purposes, that we feel we needed to make that.
Yeah, that's what I'm meaning, for budget purposes, that we feel we needed to make that call now.
I'm not afraid to go more super spectacular.
E T L will help too. We've got money.
How many, as of now, with the configuration, with the kids' grade by grade is next year?
We don't, haven't done that. Haven't had our meeting yet.
So current fifth is how many?
Usually October-ish.
So what's the current fifth graders? How many in there?
How many fifth graders do you have?
Six.
And the current fourth graders?
And fourth grade is eight, seven?
Eight.
Nine?
Eight.
So I don't know if that, for budget purposes. We already kind of said we didn't want to drop a teacher, so.
Right, right.
But I'm with Jerry that if they want to do something like, you know, take a week and go to D C. You know, whatever it is, you know, like, don't be afraid to...
Well, the point taken about, yeah, getting over to Bartlett more frequently. So a bus, a van, you know.
Right. I mean, I know for a matter of, I think it's wonderful to go to Bartlett, but if there are ways to even go down to Conway, I mean, it's just not that far. And that's a whole other population. You know, not that it has to be all the time, but it's a big world.
We're doing the STEM Fest this Thursday and we'll be doing seat perch with John Fuller.
So those of you who aren't aware, all the sixth grade students in the entire district are going to STEM Fest. And STEM Fest is science, technology, engineering, and math. And U N H Cooperative Extension is putting together a full day. So they will all go to the Conway Elementary School gymnasium. And then they will go to the Kennett Middle School mothball area, where they have lots of different classes. I mean, they're all beautiful, but they can break up and do all different activities. So they're going to do that.
I have one more budget-related question that one the board should be aware of. Remind me how we get billed by Kennett this year's?
It's a lot behind.
So on the budget thing you're talking about would be the, what we get, the current ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders this year, right now?
You get billed for last year.
Last year's ninth and twelfth.
So the tenants rate of last year's seniors will be, you'll be paying for that this year.
Not the budget we're talking about, the current budget.
Is the next budget going to be that big?
The next, that's what I'm wondering. Is the next budget going to be when we have those 11 kids we're getting billed for?
Fourth grade of your...
Current ninth.
No, it may be the following year.
It'll be the following.
Not the one where you guys are going to be working?
Yeah. That's a big difference between middle school and middle, the seventh, eighth grade budget versus the high school budget. We're paying backwards on the high school. The Bartlett contract, we pay, we try to protect the current. And then make up the difference the following year.
But that way you get billed for the number of days, accurate number of days.
So whatever, two years, treasure balloon.
The current ninth graders is they, and when we get billed for them, and that's going to double.
This year's ninth grade, so they're leaving Bartlett. So we've already paid Bartlett for...
Already paid Bartlett.
For the current ninth graders. We haven't paid Conway yet for the current ninth graders. We pay them next year.
No, that's what we just say, two years from now.
Right, two years from now. We pay for the current.
So that's this budget.
And calculate the average daily mention.
Right.
Wow.
So if kids move in or out this year, it's not accurate. So you have to wait until those numbers are accurate numbers and then they get figured into the budget.
It's almost the same tuition between Bartlett and Kennett, so.
Yes, it is exactly the same, actually.
That one out there.
But I think the reason we keep thinking is because there was a couple of years ago, there was a big difference between the two.
Even though we have the class action issues going on with the Whitney, do we have any costs that we need to be thinking about? Are there any repairs or things that we need to think about?
Not yet.
We'll come to the budget committee with that.
Okay.
But that is in process right now.
So we're just waiting?
Yeah, we're getting closer.
I was going to say, wouldn't we wait until they all come to their conclusion before we'll know?
But there may be some associated costs related to pursuing, whether legal fees and or other.
I think the latest from the class action, it was almost two months out before we hear back from what they have to say on that. We might want to consider that in our budget. That's a good point, just as I said. I think what we'll be looking for from Jim and from John is basically, what is the current status of it? Do we need to put it in the budget for next year regardless of whether we win the class action? Win any money from the class action or not? Is, and I already asked John to put together some signing options for us with some estimates on what it could cost, kind of, you know, loose figures that we could look at it. But what I did ask him is determine how many years do you think we can get away with our current signing? I think that'd be the next thing to ask John. I think about the last one tomorrow to kind of put that into his thought structure anyway on how we move forward with that.
And it might even be just to buy some time and we don't have to need to have it in the budget too. I don't even know the legality, but maybe it's a warrant article, so. Then that, if it comes down to it, we don't know by the time we go to put a budget together, we put a warrant article and then we come to the town meeting. If we know we've got the money, we as a board can ask, tell them that we don't support this warrant article now.
And we had a warrant article already for the maintenance fund for the Whitney Center. So we could theoretically...
Put it in there.
Put it in there and a lot of people adjust that up or down.
There's one other, one of the, we did have a request from a public citizen, from Jackson, who requested this information regarding the teaching staff here and salaries and years of experience, much like they do in the end of every town meeting. If there's no objection, we can provide this for that person. It's public information.
Sorry, I missed it there. Somebody requested this.
Somebody requested this, yeah.
And why wasn't it available already?
I don't think they...
It's in the annual report.
It's in the...
Yes, it is. It's definitely well published.
I just asked you.
So I, me personally, I'd rather see somebody hand them an annual report than a spreadsheet.
I didn't have an annual report.
Who can reference this? Mrs. Susan might have a couple stash that I do.
Just so you know.
So they're supposed to get this?
Yes.
Defense.
This is the staff that needs to belong.
They haven't got a pass notice in school.
That means a budget.
Oh, bad. Thank you.
Yeah, the other item too for the, I guess for the budget discussion is the fence out there that we haven't done yet because it wasn't budgeted for. I think, what I'm hearing anyway from people is that we might want to have a bigger discussion about the fence and what it looks like. So should we put together a subcommittee?
We have lots of fences.
This is why, this is why it's in the budget discussion anyway. Because we had budgeted for replacing the chain link fence along Route 16, Route 16B. So from the corner all the way to basically the river or the stream that goes through. Mostly because it doesn't really have a functioning gate is the primary reason. And so we had budgeted for it. We had approved it to be spent. And we got an estimate for a four-foot-high fence. And I guess the plan was to put in a six-foot-high fence. And the six-foot-high fence, I think, was kind of a surprise to the board and to other people in the community. So I don't think the board's really considered it yet. I know I've thought of it and I have some concerns. So I think that maybe we need to put together a committee from the board to look at what we do for our fence. So because we had an estimate for a four-foot-high fence and the plan was to build a six-foot-high fence, we didn't do it yet. And I think that that's probably a good thing because if we all woke up one day and there was a six-foot-high iron bar fence from one corner of that stream up to here, I think there would have been a lot of surprised people in town. So I think we're going to revitalize the fence. Does anybody want to, do people want to talk this over?
So at 10:00 P M. Is that you can allow for the keys?
Right, right.
So why don't you just put a gate in?
If that's all we needed, the gate with the fence rather than the sizable fence.
I guess the fence is falling down because of the snow and the kids playing on it and all that stuff. So I don't want to put any fence in.
I had a personal...
The six-foot.
What's your style tune that you would like or would you just like? I don't know.
Those are the best we have out in the world. Six, they're doing recess.
And then the whole fence got here though.
Did anybody else agree to go down?
I feel like I'm just throwing my hat in the ring if somebody else would like to join.
So Jen's a community member, though.
You seem like a...
I don't know.
I don't know if it would be of any help. Just to ask around, if I'm asking them to do, we're just asking to get some feedback from the community.
I think both, just for perspective, both John and I, you know, come up with a tall fence. But there's no sense, I mean, our five-foot fence, we would just install new gates on this one and keep fixing this. A couple of pipes that keep popping open up there. And John felt like maybe he could have it repaired more efficiently, more adequately.
For next year's budget, let's get repairing in gates in there, in the budget.
Well, we have that now because we budgeted for a four-foot fence. And if we're not doing that, we will have money to cover gates and to work with what we got. It just wasn't enough to cover the increased height, which was to keep the balls inside the playground.
But I don't want to just find out a price, like, for a net to go behind.
Right, right, maybe.
We use during the season.
Kids will stop five minutes. Our hours are going to last.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I haven't overcomplicated it. Should we just go, can we fix a gate and the fence that we have?
Yes, sounds good.
We're all good with that. So we don't need to put anything in the budget. It doesn't need to be a budget discussion anymore. We want to get more community out.
Community just can't...
So you want to...
Super efficient.
You just don't know.
They're ready.
For less money.
We need to have a preschool committee.
I know.
It'll be harder.
Summer program data.
Okay, let me pass these, pass these out. As promised, here's Carrie's finished report. Oops, I'm sorry. Page one will tell you the totals we had for each week. You can see as they came along, the enrollment increased, which I think, a number of factors. We were into August, but we also, I think word got out how much fun the youngsters were having and how wonderful the staff was and what cool things that they were doing. So there were some anecdotal responses there. And then the graphs and charts that go with it were from the Google survey that we gave at the end. So you can see the bar graphs, which will tell you which weeks the kids are staying. They rated their experience and you can see they're all up and excellent and very good, up at the high end of the scale. So we were pleased with the results. And apparently, parents and children were pleased with the... Any questions about that?
I wanted to say anything about Amy Murphy being the favorite counselor.
No, we didn't ask them that. That was written as, it wrote in comments on my, at least for... There is something about the awesome staff in this, don't they? The counselors are grouped.
Yeah, with all seriousness, that's what I heard around the community as well.
And then I think it was the spring before last, Jessica had some questions about discipline data. So I thought that I would go back into my archives and do a quick chart that talks about the number of teacher referrals to my office. What that means is when a, a lot of kids get sent to my office for a lot of reasons. I'm the reading teacher and sometimes if they're crying or whatever, they get sent to my office. The numbers totals here for behaviors that teachers have found disrespect, refusal to work, that kind of thing. And I have a chart that I keep and keep track of all of that because we report all of this data to the state at the end of each year. So there were seven in 2012. You'll see there were three this year. Students who have missed recess, that's my assignment. Teachers would often keep students in. I don't chart that. But when they are sent to me with one of those above-mentioned infractions, I might assign them to spend recess with me. You can see those numbers. Bus slips, when a child breaks a rule on the bus, the bus driver will fill out a bus referral slip, which I get in my office and then I deal with said student and parents. That details the number of bus slips that I've received over the last four years. Bullying investigations, S A U nine has a protocol that we all follow. It's a five, six-page form. We go through investigative, investigation, notifying parents and all of that. I've done four in 2012, zero last year. And then suspensions from school, most often as a result of the bullying investigation or related to that in many cases. So I just thought that, since you had asked for the data. And the other thing that I was looking at was, in the last three or four years, we've implemented mine up, we've implemented the school pledge. We've made a real school focus on kindness and respect. And so I was pleased to see last year's numbers having improved so much that I wanted to come and...
I thought it was just because we got rid of that class.
When you, when you do a bullying investigation, how is bullying defined? Is it protocol from the S A U? Or is it because someone alleges you?
No, this is a complete checklist of all of the various components that would relate to bullying. And you have to have check lists under several of those.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to share that with you.
We're doing the same thing.
Would the parents be involved and be notified if any of those infractions were happening to their child?
Most often, yes. Definitely the bullying, the bus slips, they all require suspensions. They all require, I don't always tell a parent if they're spending time in my office depending on what it's for.
They'll tell me, right?
I don't ever expect to see your children in yours.
And I know a year or so ago, we talked, there was some discussion about opening the communication between us and the police in town about certain situations. Have we had to keep that, have we used that avenue at all?
I have not.
Just because we are on these days, just want to clarify, you said this year there's been three. You actually meant last school year, there was three.
Right.
It'd be on the...
In the 2015, 16. I haven't had any, any, in any manner, so.
But thanks for putting this together. I think that, I mean, it would be great to continue to do this every year. Just, I mean, I know we're a small school and it might be hard to gather data from numbers that we have, but it's still good to see and to make sure we're not seeing trends in this type of thing. So just good to have it as, thanks for it together.
Thank you for doing the...
And you know, maybe to touch on what we've all talked about on this little sitting post, maybe, I know that you can't get too personal with the information, but grade-wise.
It would be hard for me to do that because of the small numbers. I can say that most of them were older students.
Yeah. So I was thinking, does it maybe roll into our whole sixth grade thing?
There was just a sense of comments.
I don't know, Gail, did you want us to talk about what we did this year? Oh, that was on. I thought, I thought when I said summer program data, I thought that meant...
Right, Joan was going to tell you about, we paid for her to do summer work and...
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you had asked for the teachers to come and talk a little bit about the summer work. I'm sorry, Joan.
I've been sitting here this whole time.
Thank you for speaking.
No, I just, I just wanted you guys to know. I thought those got you to talk too. She's mad. So I worked on the science committee. I've been working on the science committee since last year. And we are a work in progress, moving my own. This summer, we spent a bunch of time really focusing on the three dimensions of the NGSS, which are science and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts, and content. And we took the units that we started to build the year before and really made those functional units so performance assessments reflect what is written in the standards. So it's not just measuring kids' understanding of content, but they're able to actual, actually practice and implement the science content in doing things like making a model, analyzing data about those, all of those kinds of things. So there's a unit for every grade to try and focus on those cross-cutting concepts and science and engineering practices. So, and that's, that work is just begun. So you've been hearing from the literacy committee for four or five years now. And so this is year two of the science committee working on that. And math, I think, is up to year, second or third year too. So science is now moving in basing what we do off the next-gen science standards. Next-gen is also moving along and they're doing things like bundling things together. It sounds like, I don't know, insurance commercial. They're bundling things together. So instead of saying we're teaching all earth science, they're looking at how concepts and practices can find a common thread through the three content areas, which are life, science, earth and space science, and physical sciences. And sometimes those earth and space standard might be met...
I would.
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 I would.[889.13]